Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Councilroom. This is the Councilroom for today. We have a meeting of the Council for today. The Council is here today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing with the City Council for many years. We have a meeting of the Council for today to discuss the issues that we have been discussing
Mr. President of Planning Land Use Management, Mr. Zrani did step before the committee and was very accommodating. I just want to thank him for his service. I understand his partner too is very grateful to have him working with us. Former graduate of Cathedral High, I wanted to say that. But bottom line, yeah, tradition of Councilman Labange. But I want to thank you for all your good work and look forward to working with you as we continue down the road and try and improve the quality of our city. You have a few words you'd like to share with us? It's up to you. I want to put you on the spot. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, then, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations. You are confirmed, and thank you for your service to the city. Next item, please.
Item number two is also confirmation of city official to the Board of Transportation Commissioners.
Ms. Stradak, please come forward. There we are. And again, a reminder, colleagues, public hearings have been held in committee on the side of members wishing to speak or ask any questions. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, you are by confirmed.
Thank you, I'm happy to serve the city in this capacity.
Thank you very much. Items one and two forthwith.
Next item is, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through nine, and I understand item number four, Councilmember Pacheco is requesting that matter be referred to Budget Finance Committee.
Item number four requests for budget finance committee. Any discussion or objection to referring item four to budget finance? Seeing none, item four is referred.
And that would be items three through nine, with the exception of four. There are cards on item eight, however, public hearing has been held in committee.
Public hearing has been held in committee on item number eight. We have items three through nine, with the exception of four before us. Members, any specials? Any specials? Items three through nine, with the exception of number four. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items ten through twenty-four. There are cards on eighteen and twenty.
Let's call eighteen and twenty special. We have a card on twenty-one as well, let's call that special. I do not have cards on the balance of the items, which will deem the public hearings open and closed. Members, any specials? Items ten through twenty-four. Any other specials? Which item? Mr. Garcia, any calls to item twenty-two B special? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Madam Clerk.
That brings you back to items that have been called special. Item number eighteen has been called special, and as much as there are cards, but I believe Councilmember Weiss wanted to, or he is requesting that the special meeting be taken up.
Before we get to the individual items called special, because the agenda is disposed of ten times, I'd like to recognize Mr. Charlie Thomas for presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, I ask that you join with me today in declaring the next sixty-four days a season for nonviolence in the city of Los Angeles. In this effort, we are joined by ten countries and more than one hundred U.S. cities in this international educational campaign. Now in its fifth year, the season was inspired in nineteen ninety-eight by the fiftieth memorial anniversary of Mahatma Gandhi and the thirtieth memorial anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr. The season begins today, January thirtieth, and ends April the fourth, marking the dates of Gandhi's and King's respective assassinations. During this time, we are asked to meditate on the principles of nonviolence and let our actions reflect those principles. During this season, many organizations will host activities and events to celebrate the season. This season is sponsored locally by the Center for the Advancement of Nonviolence, and we are joined today by the center's director, Aisha Mason, and board members, Michael Benworth, who is one of our leading religious leaders. And we simply take this opportunity to acknowledge them, to celebrate their witness in our community. There is no denying the fact that, light of our own crime statistics, what nonviolence could do to help transform communities throughout the city of Los Angeles, throughout the county of Los Angeles, throughout the state of California, throughout the nation itself. That's why there are one hundred municipalities in this international campaign. And so, if you would be kind enough to recognize us and to spread the word that we are now embarking on a season of nonviolence, January thirtieth through April the fourth, I think you will have done well by your respective constituencies and doing a lot to help redeem the soul of our city. I present this to Ms. Mason on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, as well as the mayor, as an expression of our solidarity in a season for nonviolence.
Councilman Ridley Thomas and all of the council, thank you so much for acknowledging this event in this way. We're excited that Los Angeles is willing to take the lead in advocating and advancing nonviolence in our community and as an example in this country. All of you are invited to our opening ceremonies, which are this evening at the Agape International Spiritual Center. And some of our speakers will be Yolanda King, Dean Lawrence Carter of the Morehouse Chapel at Morehouse, King Chapel at Morehouse, and also William Yori of the Harvard Law School. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradley. Thank you very much, Mr. Charlie Thomas. Madam Clerk.
Next item, Mr. President, called special is number eighteen, and as much as there are cards from the public.
Okay, item eighteen is now before us, and we did have a request from Mr. Weiss for an item to be taken out of order. Madam Clerk. Miss, Mrs. Counselor.
Yes, report on the billboards, and I think it does relate to the item one on the special agenda. We also have a request from the city attorney to speak, so if we can hold this on the desk and go through the other items, perhaps the city attorney will be able to get here.
We have been advised by the city attorney that his arrival is anticipated at eleven a.m. So that's still a good twenty minutes away. We're seeing if we can get him here earlier. So let's hold both item eighteen and the special agenda item on the desk for the time being. And we'll ask for Mr. Weiss to speak then. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number eight, excuse me, number twenty called special, and as much as there is a card from the public.
Item number twenty now before us, council calls forward. Mr. Larry Green, welcome back.
Thank you, good morning, everybody. I've been out of the state, I've been in Florida and New York, working, losing weight. But item number twenty is a very important item. Now, I may have lost the election for mayor in two thousand and one and for city council, district number four. I think we have Tom Labange in there. But one thing Tom Labange and Jim Hahn never did was be in a movie with Whoopi Goldberg. I had a speaking part in the movie Eddie. I will reenact my part. That's Walt Frazier's jersey, and that got me into the Screen Actors Guild. Anyway, item number twenty is a communication from the city engineer relative to including the name of Whoopi Goldberg in on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and having worked with Whoopi and watched her on Hollywood Squares for so many years, I really endorsed this, item number twenty, so I'm glad, because everybody come to Hollywood.
Thank you very much, this concludes public comment on item number twenty. Any members wishing to be heard on item twenty? Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Green, we appreciate that performance, that the reenacting moved me, and I appreciate to pass on to Ms. Goldberg your best regards. Thank you.
Any other members wishing to be heard on item twenty? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item twenty is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-one called special, and as much as there is a card from the public.
Item twenty-one now before us, council calls forward, Mr. Larry Green.
Thank you, now, in the interest of equal time, I never worked with Martin Landau, but he is a great actor. And I endorse, including Martin Landau, on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. And by the way, I am twelve minutes into the movie Eddie. If you see the movie Eddie, you will see my part, and I actually have credit in there, and that's probably my last movie role, but I look forward to working with Martin Landau someday, thank you.
Thank you, this concludes public comment on item twenty-one. Members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-two B called special by Councilmember Garcia.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a substitute motion. I think, has it been circulated yet? I think it's being circulated right now, why don't we hold this on the table? Just to make sure, it's just a technical correction to special event motion.
Right.
Okay, well, it's being circulated now. Do you have a copy in front of you, Mr. Garcia? Okay, if we can grab a copy, you can introduce it verbally while it's being distributed, and we can report with the folks. Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Think that the change is to move that the Bureau of Street Services, this is in the third-to-last paragraph, be directed to deliver and pick up the necessary traffic control devices. So we got a bit of the second sentence there, it's smaller now, and otherwise, it's the exact same.
Okay, thank you very much, there's an amendment offered by Mr. Garcia. Being distributed, any other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's please open the roll on twenty-two B as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item twenty-two B as amended is approved. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
We have quite a few cards. Members, did you wish to take public comment at this point in time or after expensing with the issue of item eighteen and the special meeting agenda? Is there any objection to take the public comment at this time? Okay, opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Council calls forward at this time, I believe it's Larry Ross. Am I reading this correctly? To be followed by Larry Green and Dan Almaraz.
My name is Larry Ross. I came here last time to find that the council member had dismissed the adjournment. I'm glad I made it here ahead of time today. The following are only a few of the criminal activities of the modifiable perpetrators, which have come to be identified by the destination of plants counting or county clans. The destination is all embracing to include all instigators and perpetrators who have participated in this conspiracy against my sons, my family, and I, intentionally trying to expose, excuse me, intentionally being exposed to the harsh weather or environment, intentionally trying to induce stress or mental anguish or trauma, intentionally trying to destroy the quality of life or health, intentionally subjected to natural and artificially created cold environments, intentionally and continuous efforts to cause defibrillations, permanent damages, intentionally internally induce bleeding or mayhem caused by means of their toys or playthings. The government sanctioned the selling of defective products to me. The government sanctioned the selling of dangerous defective products, fraud. The government sanctioned the spying and the dissemination of the inflammatory materials or lies against me. The government sanctions the infringements or encroachments upon the ideas, works, and projects, operation, weight, and take. The government sanctioned the intentional desire to destroy or damage of speaking and singing voices or minds. And this does go on and on and on and on. We know that all of these charges come within the jurisdiction of the U.S. Supreme Court. So I would like to know who can sit or stand with the audacity and say what the outcome of this legal matter shall be before the proper body has had an opportunity to hear them. As I said, when I came here last time, I was told that you had adjourned. Afterward, I heard many rumors to the contrary, but surely I am glad I made it here today, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Larry Green, to be followed by Dan Almaraz and Remundo Inojos.
Good morning, everybody says to me, "How'd you lose fifteen pounds?" Well, I ran against Tom Labange, and I spent so much money losing that I have no money for food. In fact, they tell me Beth Garfield lost fifty pounds. That's a, thank you very much, folks, that was it. Now, I've never done this before, so before I tell you what I, I want to tell you, you're doing a great job. I watch you on TV, and all of you, all of you in the city council, all the, even Mayor Hahn's doing a great job. You gotta give me, I'll give you, Mayor Hahn did a great job, tell him I said so, but so's our president, George Bush. And what I want to say is that this Friday night, because people said to me when I ran against Tom, you know, "Melrose, you should have been a comedian." Well, I was a comedian, and this Friday, I'm performing at BB King's. That's, now unfortunately, it's not the city of L.A., but we can always, in exit, right? We can just take the city walk and make a part of the city. I'll be there with the great Stuttering John Friday night at eight o'clock, and you mention my name and I'll buy you a drink. On a, so I'll come there Friday, February first, but on a more serious note, I want to say this. I took the red line here this morning, and I'm in casual outfits, because when you lose two elections in a year, you can pretty much wear what you want. But I fell upstairs, and I have a lot of respect for this system, and I think that all the people that live in the city of L.A. should be grateful that we have all of you in the horseshoe, and Mayor Hahn, and you, you're all doing a great job, and all the people that work for the city. And as Melrose, Larry Green, I'm still here, and how do you follow Larry Ross? That's all I have to say, thank you very much. See you Friday at BB King's.
Thanks very much, Mr. Dan Almaraz, Remundo Inojos, and Fernando Chacon.
Good morning, my name is Dan Almaraz, director of the Community Reduction Project in the undercorporate area of East Los Angeles. I'm here this morning to support the newly formed Coalition Two Thousand that is made up of African-American, Latino, and Asian agencies that are focused on reducing gang-related homicides in the city of Los Angeles. I do want to mention that on December twenty-second of two thousand and one, the L.A. Times had an article that the East Los Angeles homicides is the lowest in decades, and this is the area that I have been covering for twenty-five years. So we're going to work with the Coalition Two Thousand, and I believe that we're able to reduce gang-related homicides in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Remundo Inojos, Fernando Chacon, and Nii Kwashi.
Good morning, my name is Ray Inojos. I was born and raised here in Los Angeles, and I remember, we used to live right here on Bunker Hill, and my mom would take me to the Central Market, we'd get on that little train, you know, that they remove. And then, as I began growing up, I remember the streetcars that we used to have here. I also worked for the Gang Violence Reduction Project, which was formerly known as the, was funded by the California Youth Authority since nineteen seventy-six. That's been over a quarter of a century of years that we have been working in those communities. We go into the juvenile halls and to the elementary schools, high schools, continuation schools. We also go into the Youth Authority's county jails, trying to reach the young people that have been incarcerated for the violence that they have created in the communities. So we like to continue these efforts, and we've banded a, formed a group with different agencies across the cities that would really help to reduce this and replace these people back into alternatives. You know, giving them education and rehabilitation in their lives, showing them the right direction. The Gang Violence Reduction Project helped me in nineteen seventy-six when it was formed. I came to them volunteering in nineteen eighty-four. I was addicted to drugs and alcohol, and today I stand before you. I went to college, I received my A.A. I have been in presentations, have received awards, and if not, an agency had never been there like this to help me, I would never be here standing today, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fernando Chacon.
Thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts and concerns. My name is Fernando Chacon, I'm the director of Youth Services for el Centro del Pueblo. I come before the city council along with my multicultural Coalition Two Thousand organization, which is made up of Latinos, African-Americans, and Asian-Americans. We introduce ourselves before the city council to express our concerns. This coalition was formed due to the killing of innocent victims and gang-related homicides throughout our communities. We are not here to ask for more police officers. We are, but rather to ask you for support for the funding of Coalition Two Thousand, which plans on working with at-risk youth and their families. As we know, gangs have been in existence for years, and they continue to expand. And this is the reason why this coalition is here to offer our services in order to combat the common issue that affect our communities. The coalition members bring about expert staff that have experience dealing with gangs and diverse ethnic groups. However, you might say that these programs already exist, but I'm sure you heard of the term. If it's not broke, why fix it? Well, let me tell you, I don't have to be a genius to tell you that it's broken. The gang-related crime rates speak for themselves, but I'd rather, I do want to commend Mr. Nick Pacheco for the statistics that was put out in his district. I really, I really would like to commend him, because my job, I took my job as a director of youth programs to help kids, to steer them in the right track, so they will be, so the killings will stop in our communities. I'm sure that's the reason you folks started elected, and I commend you for the hard work that you guys are doing in the community. I hope you can take this consideration, and with all due respect, once again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Nii Kwashi.
Good morning, the last time I came before this council, I came before you as Chilton Alfons. Today I come before you as Nii Kwashi Ede. That's the African name that was given to me. Nii refers to me as a chief, and so I'm a chief of a village called La in Ghana, West Africa. One of the main roles for a chief in Africa is to keep the peace. A chief role is to maintain peace within the village. Now, I'm coming back to Los Angeles, and I would like to be that same chief. Come back to spread peace. I'm talking about gangs and gang violence. We must bring peace to the streets. Now, there's something that's very interesting to me. Violence and gang violence in East Los Angeles is low. The lowest that has been in decades. Why is that? They must have something that's working in East L.A. that's not working in South Central. Why can't we take what's working in East L.A. and implement it in South Central? When there's a problem in Ghana, people come together from the east, from the west, from the north, from the south, and they work together to solve the problem. The city has a problem, you have broken the city down in what you call spas. And so, community-based organizations that work in one spa can't work with another organization that works in another spa. The city should take the best agencies that it has throughout the city and allow them to work together to deal with this problem. That's why I come before you as a proud member of Coalition Two Thousand. It's a new group of Asians, Latinos, and Black. They are combined groups of over a hundred years of experience. Some of your most proven warriors have been working in streets of L.A. But they can't compete together because they're in a different supervisor or district, or they're in a different spa. Today's time, we must check on those barriers, I don't know how you do it, but you can't divide us into spas and districts. Gangs of, just work in one spa or this spa or this district or that district. They're all over. So I ask the city council, as you move forward, to rethink how you allow your gang prevention agencies to work. Take your best, take the best of the best, and let them deal with the problem.
Thank you.
Please remember Coalition Two Thousand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, on the desk are items eighteen and the special meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting, take the special meeting up?
Yes, I believe there's a desire to take the items together. Let's call the roll on the special meeting.
Prince of Land, Garcia, Han, Holden, Labange, Mrs. Casco, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, signed with you. Twelve members present, the four, Mr. President.
Now, Madam Clerk, if possible, let's take item one of the special meeting agenda in conjunction with item eighteen of the regular meeting agenda, and I will call in Mr. Weiss to be our first speaker, but before I do that, Ms. Perry.
I have a request from Mr. Holden, since he is out ill today with a cold. He would like for me to make a motion to reconsider item one from yesterday's city council agenda on the twenty-ninth, and not only reconsider that, but then continue it for thirty days. This is about the Washington and Rampart lighting district.
Okay, and I believe that's a street lighting district, if I understand correctly. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that item is reconsidered and without objection, continued for thirty days, being on March first. I believe that brings us back to item number one of the special meeting agenda to be considered jointly with item eighteen of the regular meeting agenda. Would like to welcome the city attorney at this time for being here for presentation to set the stage in the context for discussion. I'd like to recognize first, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and welcome, Mr. City Attorney and your deputy city attorneys. Colleagues, today we can do something very significant in the area of reforming city law concerning billboards and billboard blight. Two weeks ago, we passed unanimously, unanimously, a motion to require the drafting of an ordinance to get us a comprehensive inventory of billboards in this city, to put the burden on the billboard companies, not on the city, to do this, to give us a chance, finally, to get handled on illegal billboards in this city. And I'm very pleased to say that we have before us an ordinance which does just that, and I want to walk you through it briefly, I've passed out a fact sheet to all of you, and we've had the chance to discuss it. But the elements of this ordinance are, number one, it will establish an annual inspection fee for billboards, for off-site signs in this city. fee for billboards, for off-site signs in this city. This fee will mean that this will be a pay-as-you-go program. It will pay for the cost, the full cost of full robust civil enforcement by Building and Safety and the City Attorney's Office of the problem of illegal signs and billboards. This ordinance will require billboard companies to disclose the circumstances under which they acquired their permits. It puts the burden on the companies to assist us in the compilation of the inventory and database that we need to enforce the law. It will create an inspection certificate, which will be affixed on the billboards in a manner visible to the public. And colleagues, this is very important. This is potentially something revolutionary in the way all of us do our jobs because this will not only empower city inspectors to find, target, and go after illegal billboards, it will empower your constituents. It will empower citizens to call in possible violations and it will enable citizens and Building and Safety inspectors to work together to target our efforts on the violators. Right now, it's like finding a needle in a haystack, colleagues. We have over 10,000 billboards in this city. Under this program, it won't be like finding a needle in a haystack. We'll direct our efforts and energy where they ought to be directed. We will, this ordinance will direct us to compile a comprehensive inventory and database of off-site signs in the city. We will have annual inspection. We will have enforcement. And the City Attorney, I'm sure, will address in a few moments the legality of this enforcement scheme. And I'll tell you, I, I'm very impressed frankly with the work of the City Attorney's Office in this regard because there's, there's a lot of misinformation going around this town in terms of what does state law prevent us from doing here at the city level? Does state law prevent us from rolling back illegal billboards? And a lot of people will tell you that that's the case. Well, the City Attorney's Office and I pulled the law books off the shelves. We went through them statute by statute and they provided me with the cases, citations. I read the cases. We can do this. We can provide the first meaningful enforcement against illegal billboards in this city through this ordinance. Colleagues, I want to say one final thing before Mr. Reyes, the Chair of the Committee who's been very, very solicitous in speeding up our consideration of this important measure. I want to say one thing to my friends on both sides of this horseshoe, friends who wish to see a permanent moratorium on billboards in this city, or friends who think we ought to engage in a, in a plan whereby we swap billboards in certain neighborhoods or billboards in, in other neighborhoods, or others on the council who may think that we ought to go slow here for whatever reason. Regardless of your position, regardless of what you think the future of billboard policy ought to be in this city, you ought to support this plan today as you did unanimously two weeks ago. This provides us the baseline. This provides us the means for going forward in a manner that is fair, in a manner that effectively targets illegal billboards. Regardless of your position on banning, swapping, or going slow, you have to agree with me that the problem we need to target is illegal billboards. This ordinance enables us to do that. I appreciated your unanimous support two weeks ago and I hope after a robust discussion here this morning, I'll have to give. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Before calling on the next speaker, let me sort of set the stage here a little bit, colleagues. Our City Attorneys here for presentation, which should take soon. We also have a number of members of the public who have heard of this item. We have, under consideration, two items. The special agenda, item number one, which is a follow-up to the ordinance's request of Mr. Weiss via his motion. Item 18 of the regular agenda is a status report from a motion made verbally by Mr. Casco the last time this matter was before us. And there is also the item in committee, a Mr. Casco's motion pending in Plumb Committee and I'm sure Mr. Casco and Mr. Reyes will speak to that at the appropriate time. So I just wanted to sort of set the stage before calling on the next speaker to hear both the City Attorney and members of the public. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
I'm simply trying to clarify whether we are on item 18, which is on the regular agenda, or special committee of the whole and taking up the item that Mr. Weiss just brought to our attention. You correctly characterized the process in which we find ourselves, namely that we requested a presentation from the City Attorney to update us on the totality of the matters involving billboards. Mr. Weiss has a specific motion that he brings in today that seeks to move an ordinance forward. I would make note of the fact that that hasn't gone to committee. There's a matter that's gone before the planning, the Citywide Planning Commission to come before Plumb. And so we are kind of all over the place, you might say, and it would seem to me some coherence is warranted at this particular point. And I want to register unreadiness with respect to moving any ordinance forward absent of the appropriate committee review. My question in terms of the point of order is where are we? Are we in regular session? Are we in the special session? And what specifically is before us? The report from the City Attorney, which is supposed to be a review of what has happened, no action to be taken, or an ordinance that came in without committee review?
Because of the interrelatedness of the issues and undoubtedly the discussion, Mr. Ridley Thomas, we have, without objection, decided to take both of the matters together, to be acted on separately, together whatever the desire of the body may be. So both item 18 of the regular meeting agenda, item one of the special meeting agenda are before us at this time and we will introduce.
Mr. President, maybe the City Attorney can tell us whether we're in special session or in regular session.
Reaching for the pedal.
Can you hear it? I can't now. I believe the Council President has determined that because the matters are so related that we are still in the regular agenda, but he was allowing Mr. Weiss to present a position based on special agenda matter, and that's the ordinance that's before the council. So I think the, the City Attorney is prepared to make comments regarding item number 18 from the regular council agenda, and I think that they're going to spill over into the matter that's been presented in the ordinance.
For Mr. President, may I suggest that following the will of the body was essentially to have a report from the City Attorney's Office. May I suggest that we proceed with that in any amendments or anything of the like that come forward, seen taken up in the appropriate manner.
Okay, so if now the question before us is whether to take the items separately and sequentially or to combine the discussion? If that is the question, then let's hear it.
There's one item on the regular agenda.
And one item on the special meeting agenda. We're in regular session. We have the option, though we call the roll on the special meeting agenda, we have the option to take them together, we have the option to take them separately. We take them separately, which determines that and then in which order we wish to take them.
Mr. President, if I may, what I'm seeking to do is to avoid a speed of amendments that will only cause this to become more complicated than it already is.
Appropriately recognized as it already is, Mr. Casco.
Point of order, I, I was just going to say, I think we should follow the instructions per the President. We will have discussions, we'll have discussions on many items today. Our actions will need to be closely monitored by the City Attorney and the President. We do have two different agenda items, two different agendas, but inasmuch as they are related, let's have the discussion today. I think when the City Attorney makes presentation, as well as the public hearing, we will see the array of issues and then we need to be closely guided on our actions. But we do have an ordinance presented in one item on the special agenda. We have a status report on the other and I think a lot of clarity will come once we get that presentation.
So since a concern and question has been raised, let's take a vote. What's the point of order?
I think, I think, I think we can resolve this by a request that I would make to move item 18 to the special meeting. We can vote on that and it can be part of the special meeting.
Let's take a vote on whether or not to consider the matters together. An a-vote is an agreement of considering the items troubling, a no-vote will separate the two items and will determine the sequence after that. Please open the roll on considering the items together. I read a no-vote. Everybody had a chance to vote? Please close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
Okay, that passes, so we'll consider the items together. At this point in time, I'd like to do is call upon Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm sorry, the question?
The City Attorney advised that that's an a-vote item, the measure passes. What I'd like to do at this time is call upon our City Attorney for presentation and then call upon our speakers, members of the public, and then return to council discussion. Mr. Reyes, did you wish to add anything at this time?
Council President, I just want to assert that as Plumb Chair, what I'm trying to figure out here is we have many different motions and policies that are out there. We asked the City Attorney to summarize what it is that he's doing since we asked for it a couple of weeks ago. Councilman Jack Weiss is speaking to a policy issue that's more of an implementation. That's the nature of his action. We have two areas that we need to focus on. Are we going to follow up on Councilman Jack Weiss's procedures as we have already voted on a couple of weeks back? And we need to come to terms with the policies that have been evolving for the past three or four years under the working of Councilman Burton and his task force. So I just shared this with the rest of the council that we understand what we're doing right now. Need to hear from the City Attorney what it is that he's promoting, suggesting, offering as our City Attorney. And I strongly urge you that we have a discussion, understanding that it comes back to Plumb so we can have a matrix, understanding what the policy means, that we can have a real clear directive from this body to the departments.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And clearly, it's been said, this is a complex issue. It's a complex issue for us, it's undoubtedly a complex issue for the general public to follow and understand. We are hearing the items jointly. We will act on the items. The council as a body will act on the items possibly jointly, positively separately. That will be determined through the course of the discussion. At this point in time, that's our City Attorney, Mr. Riquelde.
Thank you, Mr. President and honorable members of the City Council. The opportunity to address you regarding the billboard issue, I'm joined here on the table today by Special Assistant Cecilia Estelano and Senior Assistant City Attorney Jared Burton. Two weeks ago, you asked my office to report back to you on a few specific items that the City Attorney's Office was directed to examine. In June of 2001, as part of the motion directing the Planning Department to develop the billboard reduction program and ordinance, I provided a formal written response to that request. In addition to responding to your inquiries, I thought it also might be of assistance to you to provide a broader legal analysis of the various issues you are confronting as you consider a range of policy alternatives to address the problem of billboard blight. And I agree with councilmembers Ridley Thomas and Reyes that it's a complicated subject and I'm trying to lay out the matrix that was pointed out by Councilman Reyes so that you can have the full policy discussion and deal with the issue in a comprehensive way. So I'd like to spend some time summarizing the goals you have articulated in your debates, legal and constitutional landscape framing this debate, and the range of policy alternatives available to achieve your goals. First, a report back. There were three actions requested by the council in a motion passed on June 5th, 2001. The first was to send a letter to the billboard companies demanding that they forward copies of all permits on current signs. In your packets that I've passed out to you today are copies of the original letter sent last summer and the follow-up letter sent in November. The two remaining actions requested in the June 5th, 2001 motion are already ordinances on the books. They already exist in Municipal Code Sections 91.6205.8 and 91.6205.9 and can simply be tied into the billboard reduction ordinance. The billboard reduction ordinance itself remains in the Planning Department. The June 5th, 2001 motion directed the Planning Department to develop the swap-out program and actually draft the ordinance. We understand that the Planning Department plans to present the concept for the program to the Planning Commission on March 14th. As of yet, we have not received the draft of the ordinance from the department to review for form and legality, but we remain ready to assist the department in any way, including providing advice as to the appropriate level of environmental review. The Planning Department issued a mitigated negative declaration on the program back in December. The comment period closed on January 21 and we have offered our assistance to the Planning Department in reviewing the comments received and advising as the legal strength of the document itself. Now, let me also point out some enforcement efforts by our office. The billboard reduction program is just one of the many policy alternatives this council has been debating over the last several months. As the conduct of certain billboard companies has grown more outrageous, this council has grappled with how to rein in an industry that has marred our cities' vistas and seems to rebel and thumbing its nose at our existing permit process. We were all shocked as Viacom STI rang in the new year by attempting to erect illegal billboards along MTA and MetroLink rights away, while they thought many of us were watching what were lopsided bowl games. Two there that dismayed me, my City Attorneys immediately responded to Councilman Burton's alarm, fell and secured a temporary restraining order against Viacom STI. I'm pleased to report that last week we were granted a preliminary injunction against Viacom STI that will remain in place until we ultimately prevail against them in our actions for nuisance and unfair business practices. Meanwhile, fully half of our land use attorneys have been called upon to defend the city's existing billboard ordinances against 14 challenges from the billboard companies, which has a pile, the time-consuming task of defending these lawsuits on top of their regular workload of litigation, drafting notices, and advising the city. On the criminal side, in 2001, our office led, or held, 28 City Attorney hearings on violations of the sign provisions of the Municipal Code and our prosecutors filed five criminal cases. We have a strong track record of providing the Department of Building and Safety with prosecutorial support for their inspections and investigations. On both the civil and criminal side, our City Attorneys are going up against some of the most aggressive and in some cases, the most prestigious law firms in town, and they are more than holding their own. But there is no question that it is affecting their ability to quickly respond to the other demands on their time. So this begs the question, what can we do to make sure that all the efforts we're expending, not just in my office, but in all city departments, actually make our neighborhoods more beautiful and moves us beyond the visually blighted status quo? We've been listening closely to your debates on this issue and have provided advice on specific questions as they have arisen, but I thought it might be helpful to step back and frame the broader policy and legal issues in a way that can clarify your legal constraints and opportunities. On the policy goals, there are four clearly, there are clearly four policy goals that have emerged from your debates. First, there seems to be a strong sentiment favoring an effort to restrict or prohibit new billboards. Second, there is a desire to effectively enforce our existing permit system. The Department of Building and Safety has indicated that of the approximately 10,000 billboards in the city, an estimated 40% are illegal. In a few cases, no permit was ever issued, but in most cases, they have been illegally altered or enlarged in violation of their permit. With only six Building and Safety employees covering the entire city's signed regulation effort, it's no wonder that so many companies have taken advantage of our thinly stretched resources with respect to enforcement. This highlights the third policy goal, the need to create revenue sources to fund enforcement efforts and put real teeth into our existing ordinances so that we can reduce that 40% SCOTC law rate to zero. And finally, some of the council have expressed an interest in removing some or all of the existing billboards in our communities, particularly in those neighborhoods that are most visually blinded. Let me also now go over the legal constraints on local billboard regulations. As this City Council evaluates various proposals aimed at achieving these four goals, there are certain legal and constitutional constraints that limit some of your options. We have prepared a one-page summary sheet summarizing all of these legal constraints. Let me quickly walk you through those issues. First and foremost, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution severely limits local governments from enacting content-based regulation. We saw this most recently in the Supreme Court's Lorilar decision in which the court limited the ability of a municipality to restrict the placement of tobacco product and alcohol beverage advertising. The First Amendment also comes into play in the area of taxation. It restricts the city's ability to target taxes at First Amendment activities, such as billboards or other forms of media. State law also constrains the city's regulatory options. Specifically, California Business and Professions Code Section 5412 treats billboards differently than other land use categories in that it requires government entities to compensate billboard companies if their signs are removed. So this means that the city cannot simply adopt an amortization scheme for non-conforming uses if it attempts to ban all existing billboards. uses if it attempts to ban all existing billboards. The city would have to pay the full market value in order to remove a billboard. It could not simply phase it out over time like an old industrial use in a residential area. This is a costly problem because the billboard companies claim their signs are worth upwards of $1 to $10 million each in some cases. Moreover, the Business and Professions Code, Section 5412, also bars local governments from interfering with customary usage and maintenance of billboards. And finally, to weigh things even more heavily in the favor of the billboard industry, state law places a burden on the city to prove that billboard, that a billboard is illegal once it has been up for five years. In other words, the burden is now on us to prove that that billboard is illegal even though it might have been erected illegally. The last major legal constraint the council should be aware of is Proposition 218. Prop 218 requires voter approval for new taxes. A regulatory fee can be implemented by ordinance, but the amount that is collected from the fee cannot exceed the actual cost of implementing the regulatory program. The regulatory fee also may not be used to fund criminal enforcement efforts, although it certainly can be used to cover the cost of a civil enforcement program. Let me attempt to describe some of the policy alternatives here that we have set out in the matrix. So with that legal background, let's put together a chart. That presents a range of policy alternatives, the policy goal advanced by each, the legal constraint, if any, that limits the city council's efforts in that area, and the action needed to pursue each alternative. Each alternative is described in greater detail in the sheets labeled "Alternatives for Billboard Regulation" in your package. As you can see, we've tried to capture the range of options that council members have proposed over the last year or so. We've also added a couple of our own alternative G and H that would require changes in state legislation, but that would give the city the ability to deal with this issue on a level playing field. We think it's high time that the state legislature abolishes its preferential treatment of the billboard industry and gets back to the city's arrectal regulatory flexibility. I will not describe each of the alternatives, but I know that most of you are familiar with them. However, I think the chart illustrates plainly that by moving on a variety of fronts and pursuing a combination of alternatives, we can achieve each of the goals within the constitutional and fiscal constraints of the law. For example, we have attached a draft ordinance prohibiting all new billboards. That's Alternative A, which we fully support. That could be adopted with appropriate notice and hearing. This would address the first goal of banning all new billboards, Alternative A. We also strongly endorse the attached draft ordinance for Alternative D, which was proposed by Councilmember Weiss. That would establish a regulatory inspection and fee program. Alternative D would create the inspection infrastructure we need to address the second goal of effectively enforcing our existing permits. The fee would also meet the third goal by creating the revenue source we need to beef up building and safety's enforcement efforts. Finally, either G or H would remove the greatest legal constraint on the city's ability to remove existing billboards in our most visually blighted areas. By moving aggressively on alternative G and H, we can realize a day when all of our neighborhoods and communities of our great city are free from the plight of billboards. I strongly endorse these alternatives because I believe that ridding this city of, ridding our city of all billboards is the simplest and most effective way to address all the policy concerns raised by this council. Make no mistake, this will not be easy. Nothing important ever is. But I believe we now have the momentum and the public support to finally take back our neighborhoods from the billboard blight. Therefore, today I call upon the mayor's office to make this a top legislative priority for our city in Sacramento so that together, all of us together, may put this issue behind us once and for all. And we hope that this presentation has given you a sense of the opportunities and not just the constraints provided by existing law. As always, our office, the city attorney's office, stands ready to assist you in forging effective and if necessary, creative solutions to restore the beauty of our neighborhoods. We are of course happy to answer any questions, and we will aggressively defend whatever policy choices you make. Thank you.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Deggadillo. At this point in time, we will proceed with the public hearing on this item. The council calls forward Flora Gil Kristoloff, to be followed by Helen Itrea Norman and Louise Frankel. There are quite a number of cards to imagine on this item, so I will ask for your brevity. And if speakers before you have made stellar comments or arguments, ask not to be too repetitive. Go ahead.
I'm Flora Gil Kristoloff, and I'm the chairwoman of the Brentwood Community Council. I also sit on the San Jacinto Boulevard Design Review Board. Honorable council persons, I'm here today to support Councilman Weiss's motion and also Cindy Misakowski's motion. We in Brentwood have spent a lot of time, many, many years, in trying to reduce the proliferation of billboards, illegal and legal. And recently, we were very involved with the Wilshire CDO and reaffirmed our position on the reduction of billboards. I'm very pleased to hear Attorney Rocky Deggadillo's suggestions today, and most of all, we really support his whole statement to finally take our community back from visual blight. And that includes not supporting the freeway billboard swap concept because that increases billboard star of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's Helen Norman, to be followed by Louise Frankel and Robin Squire.
My name is Helen Itrea Norman. I'm president of the Tarzana Homeowners, Property Owners Association. Our association is in full support of Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski's motion to ban all billboards and also to tax those in existence. We strongly oppose the other lukewarm proposal to allow monstrous billboards as a so-called trade-off for removing existing illegal ones. One, we do not believe for a moment that the illegal boards will actually disappear. And two, we are appalled that some of the council members would even consider allowing huge boards to be placed along our freeways. We have worked long and hard to approve, to improve the appearance of the valley with the creation of the Ventura Boulevard specific plan and in Tarzana, the streetscape for our business district. The 101 freeway cuts through Tarzana in one stretch as just a block north of the boulevard. What a terrible visual blight. What a travesty it would be if huge billboards reared their ugly heads right through the center of town. We're trying to attract visitors and shoppers to Tarzana, not repel them. Los Angeles is a beautiful city when viewed from our freeways. With its vistas of mountains, cloud formations, open skies, we have a unique setting, unduplicated elsewhere. Please, we ask you to enhance it, not destroy it. To paraphrase, think not what billboard companies have done for you, think what they would do to the city if you let them.
Thank you. Ms. Frankel, Robin Squire, and Betty Harnes.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm Louise Frankel, and I represent over 600 residents of Mountain Gate who are so thankful that once again, we have the opportunity to plead with our elected representatives to start to remove the billboard blight that is an epidemic along our city streets and at the same time, stop the proposed pollution of our freeways. Please, those of you on the council who are wavering on this issue, consider carefully. I will not believe that the power of these billboard companies is so overwhelming that they will be allowed to continue to pollute our streets with billboards and move on to the one area free of the scourge, our freeways. I cannot believe that you will cast your vote and so forever mark yourself as an ally of those who look at our city and see only a chance for exploiting it. The ordinance being proposed by Councilwoman Misakowski is a thoughtful and wise piece of legislation. It eliminates the freeway blight before it starts. It stops the future proliferation of billboards so that our city can begin to take its rightful place among the world's most beautiful cities. It generates revenue to hire more inspectors to find the 2,000 or more or whatever illegal billboards put in place in violation of the law by the very people who are urging you to give your blessings to still more. Surely you know that with only four inspectors, very few illegal billboards will come down and who will decide where and how many decades it will take. And I was very happy to hear the proposal of Councilman Weiss this morning. Certainly will support that. There are places which by their very nature are reasonable areas for billboards, and this ordinance acknowledges that and provides for it. But don't be beguiled by the trade-off in removing 2,000 signs that the billboard companies shouldn't have erected in the first place by giving these same companies the freeway bonanza. We have a prohibition in this city already, I'm assuming from past experience, about orienting signs that are below the freeway so that they cannot be seen from the freeway and so divert the attention of drivers. Surely nothing changes that logic, and yet now you have a plan to divert that same driver on the freeway itself. Do you want to create still another safety hazard? There is only one argument the billboard proponents make. We create jobs. That same argument can be made for countless enterprises that we deem nuisances and we ban every day in the interest of public safety and health and convenience. And there are countless enterprises that would benefit if the city was not defaced, if its natural beauty was all around. The tourist industry, the travel industry, the convention industry, and yet the entertainment industry, when they shoot movies, which we're trying to keep them doing here, they don't want to film billboards. Please put the quality of life in Los Angeles first. Adopt this new proposal today and give our great city a chance to take its rightful place among the great and beautiful cities of the world.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Squire, to be followed by Betty Harnes and Nikki Padada.
Good morning. My name is Robin Squire. I'm here representing Assemblymember Fran Havley, and I've brought a statement that Assemblymember Havley would like read into the record. It reads, "Honorable mayor and members of the city council, I have been following the city's actions related to billboard removal and/or relocation. Prior to being elected to the state assembly, I was a four-term member of the Agora Hills City Council. Agora Hills banned all new billboard construction during my tenure. The city rejected a similar offer by the sign companies to voluntarily remove some billboards in exchange for the right to erect huge new permanent signs that would have been far more visually intrusive. As a result, over the intervening years, many of the existing billboards have come down in connection with development of the properties on which they stand. With no new signs going up, the visual improvement along the freeway has been marked. In addition, while the city of Los Angeles can still control billboards along city streets by ordinance, an unfortunate law, state law passed some years ago, has preempted local control over billboards within 660 feet of highways. This means that Los Angeles would be giving over control of these massive sign structures to the sign industry permanently. Most of your freeways are currently free of billboards. I strongly encourage you to stand firm, maintain local control to the maximum extent possible, and to not allow, and not to allow your sign-free highways to be subjected to visual clutter and safety issues created by the presence of billboards. I also support the motion of Councilmember Misakowski to put an annual tax on existing billboards before the voters of Los Angeles. This is an appropriate mitigation measure to enforce the billboard ban, to eliminate illegal permitted, unpermitted signs, and to help offset the costs to the city related to off-site signage. Lastly, I believe it would be appropriate to order an environmental impact report done on the impacts of allowing or banning these signs so that the city council has the benefit of a comprehensive study on which to base a decision that will change the face of Los Angeles permanently. I appreciate the opportunity to make this statement to the city council. Sincerely, Fran Havley." Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to submit that letter for the record, we'll distribute copies to the members. Ms. Betty Harnes, to be followed by Nikki Padada and Mark Freeman. Ms. Harnes with us.
Hi, my name is Betty Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm a member of the Brentwood Community Council, and I'm acting president of the South Brentwood Homeowners Association, an organization of about 900 homeowners. I wish to express support for Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski's motion to ban new billboards and Councilman Weiss's motion as well. We have seen the proliferation of billboards in our neighborhood along Wilshire Boulevard. We feel that we've reached the saturation point. It detracts from our neighborhood and others that are threatened. In the same vein, additional billboards along our beautiful freeways detracts from our quality of life as well. Let's bring the hall to the proliferation now while we have the opportunity, before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nikki Padada, to be followed by Mark Freeman and Sylvia Nickel.
Hi, my name is Nikki Padada, and I'm a college student and hope I be carrying the views of young adults today. I'm in favor of the ban on new billboards in Los Angeles. I feel that every person has the right not to be bombarded by advertisements. Billboards are permanent eyesores that are subtly coloring up this city. I feel that the city of Los Angeles needs to take action now and ban all new billboards. By supporting this ban, Los Angeles will be taking a small step towards solving a larger problem. We, the citizens of Los Angeles, deserve to have a clean and beautiful city. We deserve not to have companies advertising with larger-than-life images everywhere we look, and more importantly, we deserve to have the children of our city protected from companies who are advertising near our schools. I hope the city of Los Angeles will step up to protect their citizens and do everything they can to have their rights become more important than the rights of billboard companies. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman, Ms. Sylvia Nickel, and Vicki Costas.
Yes, good morning. My name is Mark Freeman, and I represent the L.A. County Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Coalition, as well as L.A. Link, and we are here in support of the motions by Councilmember Cindy Misakowski, as well as the idea of, in general, of banning all new billboards, as well as the very important task of bolstering our enforcement efforts by finding some form of revenue, be it by tax or permit, to enforce and to enhance the billboard, the Department of Building and Safety and their efforts of going out and enforcing these issues, as well as the city attorney's office. I'm here with a lot of different folks from the alcohol and tobacco community who are all within the audience here, and this is an issue that obviously oftentimes impacts tobacco and alcohol advertising issues. And one of the things that we've suggested in the past is that we use some of the MSA funds for bolstering building and safety, and we'd like you to consider that as well. But in the meantime, our general support is for looking for alternatives and really trying to reduce the blight within the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nickel, Ms. Costas, and Maria Caleros.
Sylvia Nickel, I'm the president of the Westside Residents Association. Our publications reach approximately 15,000 households. Since the inception of our organization in 1984, our goal has been to maintain and improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. Many council people have put forward good proposals, but if I understood our brave newly-elected city attorney, Mr. Deggadillo, to say that he is willing to fight all the way, I say let's take the bull by the horn and go with him all the way and support him. And I see one amendment here, Amendment G, that seems to fit the bill. I know it has to go to the state legislation, and yes, it may be a very hard fight, but I think it would be a fight worth it, and the people coming after us, the generations coming after us, will thank us for it. And I see a vision of a truly beautiful city of the ancients. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vicki Costas, Maria Caleros, and Jean Chigamatsu.
Yes, my name is Vicki Costas. I'm a resident and business owner of the Sotlil area of West Los Angeles. I'm here in complete support of Councilwoman Misakowski, Councilman Weiss, and our city attorney on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Caleros and Jean Chigamatsu. Ms. Caleros and Jean Chigamatsu.
Good morning. My name is Maria Caleros and I am the youth co-chair of the Los Angeles Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Policy Coalition. And we would like to go on record in strong support of Councilman Weiss's motion, Councilwoman Miskowski's motion, and the city attorney's office in their efforts to create a new alcohol billboard ordinance. The coalition is a network of over 50 organizations that identify issues and implement policies to safeguard our children and our communities from the devastation, from the devastating effects of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse. Some of the groups here today with us are the Pacoima Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Policy Coalition in District 7, Clinica con Señor Romero in District 1 and 13, and the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Tobacco, and Bisexual Tobacco Coalition in the 4th District. These are only a few of the groups that are here with us today and we have thousands of constituents. During the past 15 years, the coalition has focused much of its attention in creating policy to reduce alcohol and tobacco availability. These efforts have included attempts to reduce the proliferation of alcohol and tobacco advertisements. These efforts have included attempts to reduce the proliferation of alcohol and tobacco advertisements particularly in low-income and communities of color, which for the most part experience alcohol and tobacco billboard saturation. Billboards cause blight in our city and destroy and devalue our communities. Our youth, who are the target of such billboards, become more susceptible to the lures of alcohol and tobacco. The coalition gives its strong and unequivocal support to Councilmember Weiss, Councilwoman Miskowski, and in addition, we support the city attorney's current attempt to fashion an ordinance that would take the place of the nullified alcohol and tobacco billboard ordinances. The new ordinance may not be as broad as the previous ordinance, but will keep alcohol and tobacco billboards away from youth-sensitive sites such as churches, billboard, churches, playgrounds, and schools.
If I may ask you to conclude, please.
The coalition, homeowners associations, and the voters of this city want you, our representatives, to put a stop to billboard blight. Do not let the billboards' deep pockets blind you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jean Chigamatsu.
Hello, my name is Jean Chigamatsu. I'm from the West Los Angeles community. I'm president of the Japanese American Citizens League and I'm also helping to organize a neighborhood council in our local area. In the essence of saving time because everything I wanted to say has already been spoken by all the previous speakers. I have, I'm a retired businessperson off of Pico Boulevard, almost out to the Santa Monica City Line near Sentinel. And one of the key issues that I've been working on not just today or this week or this month, but for the last several years, is the blight of those billboards in the West Los Angeles area, especially on Pico Boulevard where I own property and work and have had my business. In a small area of less than a mile, there is in excess of 35 billboards within maybe 12-block space. It is a terrible blight and it just seems to be getting worse and worse. I'm not sure if all of them are legal, but I think this ordinance of which I'm in support of, or Miskowski and Councilman Weiss should out and going a long way. It's about time we started doing something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the common period for the two items before us. Returning now to council discussion and debate. The chair recognizes Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the people who came down here to testify today, and particularly the young people and those who are associated with the Alcohol, Tobacco Coalition. I think it really is a coming together, not only people in our neighborhoods, but people who have had other concerns, who all recognize that that is in common with the billboard industry in the city and that is that it is one of blight. Let me speak to the issues that before us. I also very much want to commend and compliment our city attorney for his comprehensive overview, creating the matrix, giving the council alternatives. Members of the council today, because we asked this as a status report, we have to receive it as a status report. Separately, there is the special agenda item which moves forward one of those items. It relates to Item D in the matrix, but it is also on the agenda today as an ordinance that can be adopted and moved forward. And members, as Councilmember Weiss said, that issue, which is just requiring the fee, requiring the permits to be posted, requiring everything, is exactly what the council asked for unanimously last June in directing the city attorney to draft that kind of ordinance. So that one was in action, that was earlier taken. Mr. Weiss's motion of two weeks ago pulled that forward and said, rather than leaving the whole thing as to come together, let's take an act on that one now. And members, no matter what view one has as to where we go in the future, that ordinance, the Weiss motion today, the ordinance presented by the city attorney as Item Number One on the special agenda, is in common. Everyone says that we need to get a handle on what is out there and this is a way of doing it. I particularly, I have no objection as an action on Item 18 today, which is the status report, that we move that to committee. Mr. Reyes has already indicated he will have in a very, very short order all of these items on the Plum Committee to get that full analysis. And I would hope that the Plum Committee would then make a recommendation, as we've heard from the community today, to say, discontinue the freeway ordinance proposal and move forward on a complete ban and a proposal on the tax within the constitutional framework that the city attorney has recommended. But that is appropriate to come to committee quickly and then come here. That it does not dissuade me from being able to act today very positively on the issue on the fee and the permits. Members, it clearly is a time that has come for us to grapple with this and grapple with it in a comprehensive way. And I think the city attorney has put forward particularly G and H on his matrix to get the state law changed so that we can amortize, makes sense. We used to be able to amortize. There are some communities in this city where specific plans were adopted and billboards were banned and we were able to amortize them in the 70s. And those are communities today, some of which I'm proud to say are in my district. And the feeling that you get when you walk through, when you drive and or walk through those communities, the pedestrian shopping centers are so enhanced not having to deal with that kind of blight. And we are also seeing in the other cities throughout this region, cities throughout this state, you feel the palpable difference when you go through a community that doesn't have billboards. That's what we need to achieve for the city of Los Angeles. I am happy to work very closely with Mr. Reyes and I will actually push my button to speak again because I do have some questions for the city attorney relative to environmental consequences of some of the other matters. But today, I feel we should act on his status report, send that to committee, and act to adopt the ordinance as is presented in Item One.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, if you can hold my time, I'd like to ask the Planning Department Director, if you could step to the table and please thank you, city attorney Rocky Delgado and your staff, all the great work you're doing. But hang tight, we just want to get some clarity on some other issues. Thank you. I just wanted to, for the sake of our discussion, allow the, my colleagues to know where the department is at, where the policy has been, where it needs to go, so we can understand the context of our actions and our expectations. Knowing that the public is going to think that now that we passed it, we're going to eliminate billboards in the next two weeks, that's not the case. We have an issue of dealing with the process and that's including Planning Commission, the work program, the Planning Department. So for me, this is a reality check so that we know where we're at in the context of this work. And I just want to say that a lot of this, these ordinances were promoted by Councilman Ridley Thomas and Councilman Burnson two years ago. And it's been in the work program since. So I want to get an update from the Planning Department where we're at and understand what the status report means and what the next steps could be based on our actions today. Please.
Okay, thank you, Khan Howe, Planning Director. Our goal is to bring all the land use-related billboard actions or ordinances to the Planning Commission at their March 14 meeting. Those would include the proposals to ban billboards. I think for the sake of the chart you have that the city attorney provided, way to look at it would be Items A and B. We would also at the same time bring the proposal of the billboard reduction ordinance, which on the chart is Item F. And again, with the goal of trying to bring all land use-related matters to the Planning Commission at the same time, we would also be bringing to the Planning Commission a enabling ordinance that would allow the creation of a supplemental use district for signage regulations, which would allow such things as a special signage district in Hollywood. And so there are basically three packages of actions, ban, reduction program, and a supplemental use district and enabling ordinance for that. Our intent is to have all of those in front of the Planning Commission for their recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, so a hypothetical here is assuming we pass what we're going to pass today, that has to come to my committee and then from there, can we make it to Planning Commission on that March date?
I'm sorry, which item are you referring to?
The, this is the hypothetical. I'm asking you this question. Based on what we do today, the actions we take today, the directive we set comes to Plum Committee, correct? It'll, from there, we need to get it to Planning Commission.
Yes.
Okay, so can we do that within that timeframe? My objective is not to delay this anymore.
Yes, our intent is to get it to the Planning, the items I mentioned to the Planning Commission March 14.
Okay, so as we move on, the other items are being promoted today in this matrix. We can all send it as one package.
All right, the enforcement ones, I'm sorry, now I understand, well, we, only the land use-related ones have to go to the Planning Commission. The ones that are enforcement-related, such as the inspection fee and those aspects, do not have to go to the Planning Commission. So.
So that would just be implementation.
They could go to Plum and you could do with them as you wish, but they do not have to return to the Planning Commission because they're not land use-related. We, of course, will educate the Planning Commission that they're, what's happening on them, but we're only bringing the land use-related ones to Planning Commission.
Thank you. Colleagues, in the spirit of trying to maintain this discussion in a manner we can move in a direction that will reach some real solid conclusions, I wanted to have this information shared with you so to know where we're at at the process. There's a strong public interest in dealing with this matter and they will understand the timeframes we're in. So it's not going to happen overnight. We do have some procedures to follow through in the, within the Planning Commission and we'll move forward. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I have no problem with Jack's motion and ordinance. I have no problem with Cindy's motion. The real question we have to deal with is, because we already have a moratorium, no new boards can be put up in the city currently. And so there's no reason for us to act today on anything. But the idea of Mr. Weiss in registering the boards is one way of identifying, hopefully identifying, which are legal and which are not legal. I don't know if it'll solve all the problems, but at least as a starting point. My big problem, and as I speak now, I have staff members who are inventorying billboards in my district. We are going to ask a couple of these companies to produce the permits on ones that we suspect are illegal. And that's a different category altogether than what we've been talking about are the illegal boards. If they can't do that, and if this Building and Safety Department has no record of permits being issued for these boards, we're going to ask Building and Safety to take down a couple of these boards and we'll have test cases on whether we can defeat the billboard industry law that they had passed that said that anything over five years, even if it was illegally constructed, is deemed to be legal. We think that that's wrong on its face and needs to be tested. And I think that we need to proceed to do that. That's independent of all the other things that we've talked about. Now, banning billboards is fine and getting some registration fees and inspection fees that we can use for enforcement, that's great. I have absolutely no problem with that. That's a good direction to go in. But in banning billboards completely, and you're talking about now having an industry areas such as Hollywood, there ought to be a price, even if we don't pass the ordinance along the billboards, along the freeways, there ought to be a way by variance when a new board is constructed anywhere, that a certain number of boards may be required to be taken down by condition, not just along the freeway, but anywhere in the city. And so I'm, I think that one of the things that we need to do is we need to fine-tune these things. We've got about five or six different proposals which are now before the council dealing with billboards. Now, the Mark Ridley Thomas ordinance, which was not taken up by the task force but sent directly to the Plum Committee, I believe, I think the, and I believe there is a motion is there now to send all of these to Planning Committee to be dealt with almost immediately and back. I'm going to support that, but I want to tell you, I strongly support the actions that are being proposed here, both, and I want to commend our city attorney for doing a great job. Rocky, I don't know if you're listening now, but you did a great job and follow up. When I first was alerted on the, what SDI was doing, I had a little difficulty getting a hold of you, I must tell you that because I think you have an unlisted, unlisted, unlisted number. But I did manage to get through because I have my ways. And by the next morning, he was in action. I want to commend the Building and Safety Department. They did a very, very good job. I got a hold of Andrew Adelman that same day. He was, he was much easier to get a hold of than you, by the way. And the next day, this was on, this was on a holiday. The next day, they were both in action. There was a stop work order put through and I think they did a great job and I think I want to acknowledge what they did because they acted very, very quickly and very effectively. Now.
Mr. Burnson.
Is my time up already? I just started. I'll press my button again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think what we're discussing here today, colleagues, members of the public, is essentially rule of law. And our inability so often in the city, when we pass legislation, is with enforcement. We find this in all kinds of other areas and essentially I think a lot of this goes after, at least in the initial stages, making sure that we do have rule of law here in Los Angeles and that we have guidelines that are transparent both for an industry and also for the public, so that we can empower the public to know where it stands and where its rights are. The public wants action from this city. The public wants action from this City Council. And I believe that today can be one of those days. We want to know where they are, we want to know which ones are illegal, and we want to understand how we can give power back to the people who feel so powerless right now about this and how we can promote responsible business practices. And when an industry has great benefits, as in most industries, we can also benefit from that. I appreciated, and just wanted to quote a line from the industry, Mr. Spiker's letter to each one of us that said, "Everyone benefits from a strong economy." I couldn't argue against that. As Chair of Economic Development and Employment, I want a strong economy and I want to build one. It says, "The hundreds of legitimate businesses that advertise are responsible for a substantial portion of the sales tax generated in Southern California area and supports indirectly many thousands of Southern California jobs." This too is true, but the difference here is as revenue has gone up, there has been no tax for us to benefit from that. So the public has gotten no benefit from that. So while the companies that are advertising themselves pay sales tax for the things that they do, this other group of companies that also gets something from, you know, the economy is not paying that. And I know that there are responsible members, Mr. Allen was here, of the industry who are interested in that. And I know that we can get that in a way that I think is responsible and like most industries, as the economy is rising, that is something that will benefit the public sector as well so that we can spend that on public benefits as well. I think that the G and H, Mr. City Attorney, are great proposals as well. And I think that we need to send a delegation here from, and maybe you'd like to join us, the mayor, to go up to Sacramento and actually lobby on those things as well. I think that's going to be a very important step, that we not just say it here and hope that legislators hear it, but that we actually go there. And that we reach out to the industry and tell them that these are things that we think are simply just responsible things to do. As the proud seconder of Mr. Weiss's motion, I think that we have that opportunity today to take a giant step forward to inventory this. I think there are planning issues that do need to be heard and planning with a whole host of the other ones, but if this goes forward today, it certainly has my strong support and I think would be, send a loud message that we can be responsible together in this city in empowering everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco.
I just wanted to make sure that as we go through this administrative process, that there are people out there in the community, especially in my community, who are very seriously looking at the small billboards that are along the corridor. seriously looking at the small billboards that are along the corridors, the major corridors and major streets in the residential parts of the district, that shouldn't be there. And so I am definitely understanding of Jack's position, everyone else's position, about taking an aggressive attack, finding out what's out there. But in no way should this, so my support in that direction mean that I've given up on the concept of doing the trade or a swap, so I can take out the ones in the neighborhood. I think there are two separate issues here. I think that when you look at what's illegal and eliminating those, we may find out, as Building and Safety has told us before, that something that's being deemed illegal for technical purposes, they may actually comply, make the changes. If the size is out of whack, if they end up having to permit for one size and have a larger one in, the billboard company can just swap out the larger one that's out of compliance, bring in the smaller one, and it's now become, gone from illegal to legal. So I'm not hanging my hat on this case of being, going after the legal ones to satisfy my community. I'm really looking at this from the standpoint of what's going to get those little, those single sheet ones off, and the only way I can get those off is I have some mechanism of swapping them. So I'm looking at that option very seriously, but I'm still not satisfied with the numbers and the ratios on the swap. And I also found out that tentatively, the negative declaration had recommended that the large billboards on the freeway only be on the south side of the freeway of the 10, the Santa Monica Freeway, because those going down westbound on the Santa Monica Freeway could then still see the skyline of downtown. But whoever made that recommendation forgot to think about the fact that there are people who live south of the 10, and you're willing to basically obstruct their view of downtown, our own city of L.A. residents, but we're going to allow people who come through. So personally, if we're going to basically obscure the view for the residents, I think it's only fair that we obscure the view for the tourists, the transients, the people coming through the corridor. It's basically an equal protection argument. Either you give it to all or take it from all. So I just found that that discriminatory recommendation wasn't one I could support, so-
Thank you.
Right now, I do have some changes when that program comes up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, let me rise to support Mr. Reyes's motion to cause this matter to be taken up in Plumb on an expedited basis. In so doing, I want to acknowledge the fact that Mr. Weiss has come forward with a particular motion that seeks to draw close attention to the matter, and that certainly is to be commended. Members of the council, you'll recall several months back, we moved forward to the city attorney, what is essentially a comprehensive look at this matter of billboards. We spent a considerable amount of time getting there. The city attorney has taken a lot of time to look at various aspects of it. A matrix has been presented to us today for our review, so that we can carefully, intelligently evaluate how these pieces fit or do not fit together. And as others have commended that office for the clarity which it brings to our discussion, I want to lend my voice. That clarity is advanced by way of this matter being sent to committee. Mr. Reyes has already begun to think through the template for us in such a way that if we were to decide to move this piece forward as the first step in the process, we will at least have laid open what the process itself is. That strikes me as being fundamentally important. And so the ordinances that then get drafted can be drafted in a sequential, coherent, and intelligent fashion. To do this today, absent that discussion, seems to me to create the kind of disjuncture that we can hardly afford, and may, in fact, accomplish just the opposite of what we intend. We have struggled, from the policy perspective, for more than a decade to get something done to bring billboards under control and to a place where they are at least acceptable within the context of our respective communities. If we don't do this in a prudent, methodical way, I'm afraid that we will set ourselves back. Therefore, what Mr. Weiss has put forward is essentially an amendment to what is already in the series of ordinances that we wish to have drafted. I think that amendment needs to look, be looked at with care by the committee, come back to us, and then we can proceed, and I think we'll be on much more solid and indeed a defensible ground. I would rise once again to support the motion to refer to committee on an expedited basis.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I, too, want to thank colleagues here, particularly Ms. Kowski, for showing real leadership in this issue that we have long grappled with. And may I also say thank you to the city attorney. I finally understood it after I looked at your matrix. And may I say thank you to all those who took the time to come down here and testify on this issue. And Louise, you will appreciate this. In 1951, as Morton Allen reminded me, there was a young councilman, right in these chambers, who introduced an ordinance which was unanimously passed to ban all billboards within 500 feet of any existing freeway. That councilman was Kenny Hahn, and that ordinance stood for 45 years and still stands. It's just, you know, we're still grappling with it. And I really appreciate Jack Weiss, your leadership as well, bringing in your ordinance, which really helps us, bottom line, get a handle and provides the needed revenue, particularly at this time in the city, to increase our building and safety staff, to increase inspectors, to make sure that, again, this money is not coming out of the city coffers, but the burden is on billboard companies to help regulate their industry. While I'm in favor of everything we're doing, I must say, and I know it's not going to make everybody happy, but while a strong ban on future billboards is important, and we're even offering some exceptions in particular districts, and clearly, while we're going to finally identify the legal and illegal billboards in this city, and we're going to make it easy for residents to identify illegal billboards, so that they may play, pay a part in phoning in illegal billboards. What this doesn't help me with right now is ridding my district of legal billboards, which have caused an enormous blight devaluation and have destroyed neighborhoods. It's probably one of the biggest complaints I get is from my residents to say, how can we get rid of those billboards that have just sprung up all over the neighborhoods that are obstructing the view of average people, of kids going to and from school? Those are what, in my opinion, has degraded our neighborhoods more than anything that has happened, and that's what I need help getting rid of. And while I see we have an option of state legislation, of G and H, you know, I hate to tie anything we're doing down here in the city on our wonderful state legislators, because that's risky. We don't even, we don't always know how they're going to act. I need something now that helps me ban future billboards, target illegal billboards, but getting rid of legal billboards in my neighborhoods that is really destroying the quality of life. So I am in favor of sending this to committee, seeing if we might make sure there's something in there that we have the authority to get rid of legal billboards in our neighborhoods while we move forward with this ordinance. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much. Yesterday was, I think, the prettiest day in Los Angeles, with big, beautiful clouds. Today's a beautiful day in Los Angeles. Today's a great day for the City Council, because our city attorney came here, and I second the motion, Ms. Hahn, that there was the best matrix that I've ever seen to understand an issue. This billboard issue that's been going on, and you mentioned your great father and the work that he did years ago in the billboards. I support Mr. Weiss, Jack Weiss, in the effort that he is doing. I support Cindy Misakowski. I support what the city director of planning spoke of about supplemental use districts, maybe not just in Hollywood, but maybe in corridors in the city that meets approval. I don't, I don't support what my great colleague from the 14th district spoke of, because when you pass on that great interstate, 10, through the city of Los Angeles, and you see the Los Angeles Times, big print shop there, you look up at this great skyline that Gil Lindsay and Tom Bradley and John Ferraro built, and others built, and that should always be free, I believe, when you ride on the freeways, it should be free of the visual blight, and we should pay attention to the safety of traffic. If you drive out the Santa Monica Freeway, west of the Harbor Freeway right now, you see the great job that Caltrans has done, and re-landscaping, and you see the flowers starting to bloom and blossom. But that area is not irritated by billboards and other sites. We should keep our hands on the wheels and focus, and not collide and focus. I just wanted to say, too, that our cities all around us, what they're doing, West Hollywood does support new billboards only on Sunset Boulevard. Beverly Hills issues permits, but they're very restricted in just a few areas. No new billboards in Glendale, Burbank, 16 billboards in the city. Billboards are restricted to relatively few areas. Pasadena, billboards are restricted to relatively few areas. Commerce, city ordinance does not allow billboards. Santa Monica, new billboards are forbidden. Culver City, new billboards are forbidden. Torrance, new billboards are forbidden. Agoura Hills, where Fran Privley came from, former councilwoman, now Assembly member, ordinance banned all new billboards. Long Beach, billboards are restricted to certain areas. San Jose, no new billboards. Billboards outlawed in San Francisco 30 years ago. Santa Ana, San Diego, no new billboards allowed. All this is pressure on us now, so we must do the right thing. I want to support Jack Weiss today, but I also want to support Ed Reyes, and come together, so we come back here with the right plan for the people of Los Angeles that will be for the future generations, so that they do see the beautiful skyline and the great mountains that surround the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I support the motion, along with my distinguished colleagues, but I have a couple of questions, and maybe our distinguished panel of experts can answer. The definition Mr. Pacheco discusses, the small boards, and we've got these huge boards, and then we've got these monstrosities. Will we be involved in all of them, from the small boards to the large boards, everything in between? The definition of the billboard, is it all-inclusive, all sizes, all locations?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. The next question is, we pass this street furniture project, which permits street-level sidewalk, the bus benches, et cetera, and advertising at those locations. Now, some people can interpret those as billboards, because it's, again, advertising within our community. Is that in all, at all included in this proposal, or any of the proposals?
That would be a separate proposal, and that would essentially exclude that form of advertising from this billboard ban. Because I look at this process of improving the quality of life, proving the visual aspects of our city, when we talk about the removal, reduction, elimination of billboards, yet on the other side of the coin, at street level, we're establishing all of these, if you want to call them billboards, in another concept, where people at street level can see it. And it reminds me of a commercial that the State Department of Health is running, where the little kid goes into the liquor store, and they've got the cigarette advertising right there eye level, so that little kid can see it, not above, but right there at eye level. And it reminds me of that, if we're going to be serious about the process of a quality of life, we're saying, we're going to remove these, but we're going to permit these at street level, where pedestrians, where the drivers are all going to see it. So I want to be fair to the public and be fair with the policy, and I support everything we've discussed, but I don't want to exclude something that should be included if we're talking serious quality of life issues when it comes to the billboard and the advertising. And while I'm pro-business, I'm also pro-quality of life. So if you can address that part of it, the last part, please. Well, again, I think what we tried to do today was to take a step back and frame the debate. We laid out a number of alternatives, alternative G and/or H would give us the flexibility to deal with any form of billboard advertising, including the one you discussed, which currently we do not have because of state law. So I believe we do have that opportunity. I hope that through the comprehensive approach we take, and we will be able to solve the problem of billboard blight, including issues that you have raised today.
So the umbrella will cover all of them?
G and H would be able to cover both of them, all these issues, all of these issues.
Okay, so there will be no exclusions. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. A couple of matters. First, I would formally move approval of the ordinance today. Second, I want to offer a brief amendment, which would go in the second paragraph, 91.6205.18.2, fees for inspection. After the sentence reading, the fee will be used to finance the costs of administering the inspection program. Insert the following sentence: Payment of the fee shall not create a presumption that the sign is lawfully erected, as that term is defined in section 91.6202.3 of this code, housekeeping point number three. I take it from discussions with council that the ordinance as proposed is exempt from sequel. Am I correct in that understanding? Right. Okay. Finally, colleagues, I would tell you that we have today the chance to make a difference in this city. This ordinance has been moved, it is before you, and there is no good reason not to act on this, because approving this ordinance keeps all your other options open. Approving this ordinance allows you to continue the strong efforts of my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas. It allows Mr. Reyes the opportunity to consider all of the future policy options for billboards in his committee. It allows Mrs. Misakowski the option to have her proposal for a ban and a tax to be considered and debated, but we need a baseline. We need to get the job done. I mean, and how many of you up here aren't convinced that the people of this city have spoken loudly, and they have spoken long enough, and it is time for us to act? We are a policymaking body. We need to make policy for this city. We need to stand for something in this body, and it is time that we stand here for what is a very reasonable program, an inspection program and a fee. I would like to ask Mr. Kine, who's here from the Building and Safety Department, if you can hold my time, please, if he could come forward and just explain to us the mechanics of how the Building and Safety Department, with a program that is funded pay-as-you-go, as the ordinance before you is, can start to get a handle on the problem of illegal billboards in this city. Mr. Kine?
Thank you very much. Dave Kine, Chief of Building and Safety's Code Enforcement Bureau. Last week, at the urging of council, the department turned in a report, which basically addressed various amending motions that were passed last June. And in that report, that report basically puts enforcement into three categories. It describes what first has to happen as a survey of the city in order to create a database that identifies both legal and illegal signs. We've thought about it very long and hard over the last year. Really, the only practical way of making an accurate database is to do a citywide survey. It would certainly help to compel, excuse me, sign company owners to submit the list and permits as well. That would certainly expedite that process, but we still need to do a survey. So the report addresses staffing needs to accomplish that. The second thing it addresses is the approximate 40% that we were, of those that we think may be in some kind of technical violation. It addresses the staffing needs to do enforcement work in conjunction with the city attorney's office to bring those into compliance. And then the third element of the report is the staffing levels for every year after the initial survey and the enforcement work, to do an annual inspection program of whatever is left out there in terms of legal signs. And we think that's an important element, because it could get out of hand again if we don't monitor it after that point. That's what's happened over the last few decades. So Council and Weiss's proposal here, the department's- So, Councilman Weiss's proposal here, the department's had a chance to review, and it's very consistent with the report that we've just recently submitted last week.
Colleagues, I would just urge you, as my colleague Ms. Misakowski has pointed out, this council has debated this issue, and began a real strong substantive debate over six months ago. As far as I'm concerned, we are at the closure point of the necessary debate, and we need to not send this to committee and have more debates. We need to act and give the people a program that they deserve.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to second Mr. Weiss's motion today, so that we can act today. Members, two weeks ago, we had a whole lot of people expressing outrage around this council. How come it takes so long to get things done? In fact, the way Gil Lindsay used to say it is, how come around here it takes so long to get nothing done? And today, we can act. We don't need to send this item, that is the ordinance that is prepared, that the city attorney has said does not need CECL review, we can take that, we can move on it. It is common to every interest, it is common to everybody who has any position on billboards, we should do it today, not continue that one. The other item, I want to, whether it's a ban, whether or not we get a report on the freeway reduction, that should go as policy to Mr. Reyes's committee. I said to Mr. Reyes, and I want to say here, members, I don't think we should wait until all of this gets set as policy to the commission. After Mr. Reyes reviews it, I would like a recommendation from that committee to come back to this council. Members, we should kill the freeway reduction ordinance. I know that's going to be debated, I know there's going to be issues, but it should come forward. We shouldn't have the staff spend more time on doing something that's complicated. We even heard from Mr. Pacheco, they said, gee, he saw that in the negative declaration, they were saying, do it here and not here, and he objected to that, because how can you value the view of a tourist on that freeway looking at these great vistas of snow-capped mountains today versus the residents who have the same right to that view? The freeway reduction law is that someone's going to be offended, and there's going to be a lot of trade-off in communities that I dare say may never happen. I think we should kill that, put the ban in effect, and let Mr. Reyes's committee take a look at that, and give us that option. If the council doesn't want to do that, the council says, let's continue keeping everything in the air and juggle these other options, that will be the will of the majority, but I think we should precipitate that, precipitate it after Mr. Reyes's committee has had a chance to look at it as the policy options. To Mr. Pacheco and others who want to act today, amortization at the state level, we are talking about going up on Wednesday to see Mr. Wesen Swornian, a strong delegation of this council with the city attorney, with the mayor, saying this is a number-one legislative item, can get very quick action. The other thing, that the part of my motion, which should go to committee and be discussed, is the issue of taxes. A tax on the billboard industry, separate from the fee, separate from inspection, separate from enforcement, can start creating a pool of money that neighborhood councils could have on direction to help look to buy down, buy out those billboards that are legal that the community wants. It gives us reduction, it gives us enforcement, it gives us total banning, and a step forward that this city should have taken long ago, and we did take with the freeways long ago, and we should maintain it. So, I think we can act today on the enforcement inspection side, we've got people ready. And let me tell you one other thing that I have a problem with, and I think the committee will hear about it. When the billboard, the freeway reduction thing comes to commission, when it can come to commission, there is, right now, that has been published by the planning department, a negative declaration, saying it doesn't have CECL consequences, it doesn't have inspired mal consequences. There have already been letters written to the planning department, the city attorney has said that they will review those to determine whether or not a negative declaration can suffice, or whether, as some of the letter writers have asked, a full EIR needs to be done, just on that proposed ordinance. If it requires a full EIR, we're going to be a year from today before we can act. That's why I say, before we spend that time, that effort, that money, that analysis, let's have Mr. Reyes look at this matrix, make a recommendation from that committee, come back to council, let the council make the policy choices as to which way we want to go. But today, we can act, common to all, to get enforcement and inspection and the fee in place now while we debate the rest. But I think the debate of the rest should not be postponed, it should be precipitated shortly after the plum committee has a chance to make that analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Berthold.
I move the previous question. Oh, okay, well, if you don't want it, I'm going to talk to him. I was going to try to bring this to a head. Let me just say this, I do believe, while I support virtually everything that's been said here, I do believe it should go to committee and come back in a week or so. And that's the request of the planning chair. However, I think we're going to take a vote separately on these things. Let me just say this, I will support sending the entire committee. However, if there are not votes to send Mr. Weiss's thing to committee, I will support it today, because I ultimately believe that it's something we should do. I just feel that we ought to act uniformly, rather than go off in all different directions. So, I would ask, hopefully, that we will do that, that we will send it all to committee. I might add, you know, in all due respect to how we deal with the billboard issue, whatever we do today is really not going to help us to get rid of illegal boards. We've got to get the big problem we have in the city, of the 10,000 boards we have, I would imagine probably 30 or 40 percent of them are not there legally. And we have state law that says they're presumed to be legal after five years if we don't do anything about it. Now, we need to test that. And I think Rocky's prepared to do that. I'm going to ask Building and Safety, we've already completed a sample inventory in our district of 10 boards in each area. I'm going to ask Building and Safety to contact them next week, and ask them to produce permits for those boards. They don't have one, and we don't have records of them. We're going to tear down, I'm going to ask Building and Safety, if necessary, I'll bring an action to this council, asking Building and Safety to do that, and we will test that law in the courts. So, that's the thing that we need to do. As far as the legal boards that are there, there's not a way that you can take those down except by amortization, which means pay off the landlord who gets a rent for them, the company who gets money for the advertisement. That is something that is virtually unaffordable to any community. But there are ways of dealing with this. If we're going to permit signs of any kind in new areas, such as entertainment districts or wherever we may do it, we can buy variance. By variance, we can require conditions that we mitigate whatever damage the environment is being done by the new sign by taking down a number of old, unattractive signs. That's one way that we can reduce the number of signs that are there legally. But my main target right now is getting the illegal signs gone, and I think that's something we ought to strive for. I think Mr. Weiss's ordinance will help, and I think that we're moving in the right direction. There's a lot of cities, and I happened to have been out in Santa Clarita last weekend because I had a club, look at their metro station, and I can tell you, one thing you noticed was, it was beautiful, you could see the hills and everything else, because there were no billboards.
Thank you, Mr. Berthold. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just want to clarify the record that, Mr. Labange, especially, it's not my intention, it wasn't my intention to convey that I was not concerned about the skyline. What I'm trying to convey is, if you're going to obstruct the skyline, let's not discriminate against the poor residents who live south of the 10, in favor of the residents who, or people in the world who have the luxury of driving around in a vehicle, because that, to me, just seems unfair. That was my only point, is if we're going to obstruct the skyline, and that's a decision we will make later day, I just want to make sure that if we're going to obstruct it, let's not further compound the problem and discriminate in the process, and that's all I was trying to say. I'm not trying to suggest that we do anything, or we're not making that decision today. I understand the motion is not inconsistent with the other program, so I will be vocal in it today, Mr. Weiss, but I want to make it very clear that the impossibility of helping out my residents would be a problem, which to me is the primary obligation I have, is still what drives the fact that I'm looking at this trade-off very seriously. If someone has an alternative to how I can address the single sheet billboards that are 90 percent owned by a company called Vista Media, if you drive around the poor neighborhoods and you look around and you see Vista Media in the poor neighborhoods, but you don't see them in the more affluent neighborhoods, I want you to come up with a solution that addresses that problem, because the swap is a very attractive solution at this juncture of the debate. So, I'm just putting it all out on the table for anyone who wants to criticize us, or even thinking about the swap. I have a poor neighborhood, I want some relief for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, a vote is near. I simply want to salute Ms. Misakowski's candor and her assertion to kill the big billboard reduction ordinance. Never have I heard her be so forthcoming with a verb that's strong. Let me, and to think of it on the day that we declare nonviolence in the city. My, my, my. Send her that proclamation. The difficulty that I, I'm free at last, the difficulty that I have with the matter is simply this. The notion of a ban is insufficient. It is inadequate. It does not give relief to the communities throughout this city that deserve it and have deserved it for such a long time. That's the problem with a ban. Billboard reduction ordinance, bans plus it reduces, it takes the billboards away in excess of 1,000 bases. It does obviously provide an incentive for others to go off on the freeway, but that's the deal that has to be considered in order for us to get relief from this glut of billboards and neighborhoods throughout the city. So, I wanted to be clear that a ban is not good enough. It has to be more than that. Mr. Reyes has what I think is a reasonable compromise, accommodates the request of Mr. Weiss, it satisfies the balance of the members who wish to see us proceed in a methodical way. I yield the balance of my time to Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Councilmembers, colleagues, what I'm trying to do is be fair to everyone. There's been a lot of words put forth on this issue, and I applaud Councilman Jack Weiss's word, and the word the city attorney has been doing. What I'm trying to assert here, and hoping you'll support me on, is that I will make sure we get Councilmember Jack Weiss's auto committee next week, and the balance of the issues will continue and bring it back for a strong action as soon as the process allows, as soon as all the legal mandates are addressed by the state, et cetera, et cetera. So, my point here to you is this, that we bring it all back to plum. I will make sure that we get his, Councilmember Weiss's proposal out and activated as soon as we can. Mr. Kine, what will one week do in implementation?
What will one week do?
One week, if we need to wait one more week to get Councilmember Weiss's work out in the street, what will one week, what's the difference?
We don't have the staff right now to do any kind of a survey, so...
When will you have the staff?
When we're authorized by council, by higher staff, funded in higher staff, not to...
Okay, and what is the shortfall in personnel to be able to address and implement, Mr. Weiss's?
It depends, Councilman, on what kind of a program you want us to do. If you want us to just do a survey of the city, or you want us to follow up enforcement, and it's contained in our reports and estimates.
So, we need a proposal from your department to tell us how effectively and how quickly we can implement this policy. So, one week will not make a difference.
Not in terms of the initial starting.
Okay. My point, colleagues, is that I want to show respect to all the work that has been done previously. I support what Mr. Weiss is proposing, but I want to be very pragmatic in what we're getting done. That's the reason why I want to get this one week, we can get a proposal, we can figure out how we're going to do this, and we can do this in committee, I promise we'll get this out one week, knowing that councilors have to leave. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Remove the previous question, separate the two issues on the vote.
One thing at a time. Move the previous question.
Yes.
Okay.
Or her own, want to speak quickly.
We have one speaker left, let's open the roll, the previous question. Okay, Mr. Garcia, anyways, that ends discussion, we don't need a vote. Madam Clerk, first motion before us.
Mr. Reyes's motion to refer the entire matter to plum committee.
Now, I can read your mind, I think, you're going to want to separate the question. There's a discussion of whether we send all matters to committee, or do we separate the Weiss-initiated ordinance, and vote on sending the balance of the items to committee, and vote on the Weiss motion today. Let's take a vote on the separation of the question. A yes vote, a yes vote separates the matters, a no vote keeps all the matters together to be referred to committee. Is that clear? A yes vote separates the matters, a no vote keeps the package going to committee. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, four noes.
Okay. That passes. Okay, then, I believe we can send the balance of the items to committee without objections. Does seem to be the consensus, all matters, with the exception of the Weiss-initiated ordinance.
And now, we need to vote on the motion.
Right, we haven't voted on that yet. All other matters have been sent to committee. Now, a vote on the ordinance, it's been presented to us.
And there is an amendment, and a new ordinance is in front of the council, there's a copy of the new ordinance here.
Okay, so this is a first reading on an ordinance. Is there a question?
Counsel.
Mr. City Attorney.
It is important that we, that the council make a finding on the record that this ordinance is exempt from CECL.
The city attorney's advice?
Yes.
As was discussed earlier.
We need to make it a formal finding on the record.
Okay, thank you. Then, if there's no questions, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Garcia, Ms. Misakowski, do you wish to be acknowledged? Okay, now we have the ordinance now before us on a first reading. Please open the roll. Oh, Mr. Ridley Thomas withholds, so without a vote, that'll carry over for a second reading one week from today. Mr. Ridley Thomas. Okay, that holds over. Okay, next item, please.
Motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
That clerk suggests for closed session, excuse me, that clerk suggests, Mr. President.
Okay, and public comment has been held for today. Are there any announcements? Members, any announcements? Any adjourning motions?
Mr. President, a little bit of announcement, just for the members of the public.
Well, hold on a second.
Who came?
High-ups in the chambers, the council waiting is still going on.
This is not usually ordered, but I know a lot of people came from outside, and I used to come to city council and didn't know exactly what had happened. Would you mind explaining what withholding is and what just happened, so folks know from the public, or maybe the city attorney's office could explain that?
Okay, for the benefit of those who may have a question or be curious about what exactly happened here, several matters that were raised in relationship to billboard policy in the city in today's meeting, everything was referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee for consideration, prompt action, and quick return to the council, with the exception of the ordinance that was initiated by Mr. Weiss's motion, that was presented today by the city attorney. Because of the rules, ordinances require a unanimous vote of no less than 12 votes on a first reading. Anything short of that, whether there's a no vote, less than 12 members or somebody withholding, requires a second reading. Today, we had one council member at least withhold on the vote, which carries the ordinance over for a second reading. The second reading will require an eight vote. The second reading will require an eight vote for approval, so that matter carries over for one week. Is that clear? And in case you're interested in coming to watch next week, there's a 99 percent certainty that there will not be a council meeting next Wednesday, so the matter will very, very likely be agendized for next Friday. Okay, I believe that answered the question, Mr. Garcetti. Once again, members, are there any announcements? If there are no announcements, are there adjourning motions? Members, please stand for adjourning motions. We can have everybody, the audience, please stand in silence, please, as we have adjourning tributes. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to request that we adjourn our meeting today in honor of the memory of Mr. Leonard Flint, who passed away this past Tuesday. Mr. Flint leaves behind his wife of 51 years, three children, Ron Flint, Stephen Flint, and Crystal Lord, who is the wife of former San Pedro honorary mayor, Dennis Lord. He also leaves five grandchildren. He served under General Patton and spent several years fighting in Europe. He returned home to Strathmore, California, and got into the auto body and paint business out of his love of cars. He went on to own his own shop in Porterville and became a respected businessman. Leonard and his wife helped to found the Faith Baptist Church in Strathmore and served as leaders of youth groups and in the music and choir programs. Mr. President, members, I ask you to join me in honoring the memory of Mr. Leonard Flint.
Any other motions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.